Hello, welcome to the Chris Nelson Show. I am Chris Nelson. It is June 10th, 2020, and this episode is brought to you by Mike Velardi for Congress. I gotta tell you, a lot of you saw that video where my friend Christina Gomez got arrested simply for wanting to refuse to wear a mask in a store. And then the next day, our friend Cindy got arrested for just standing on a street corner by Palm Beach Sheriff. Well, let me tell you something about Mike Velardi. He went down there to the jail. He actually went down there, stood by them, and waited for them to get out. This guy is a solid guy. He cares about people. And right now, he needs your help with a contribution. If you can help him in any way, just like he helped Christina, he's a good man, and you can go to velardi2020.com. He is running for Congress in Palm Beach County Republican Party. Go to velardi2020.com, and that message is paid for by Velardi for Congress. And today, I am joined by candidate for Palm Beach Commissioner in District 3. This is John Maples. How are you doing today, sir?
I'm doing well, Chris. It sounds like I got introduced for a basketball game again. I was having a little flashback to there.
So you're a basketball player?
I was at one point. I was an All-American Basketball Player for Palm Beach Atlantic at one point.
Nice. That's awesome. And now you are running for Commissioner, and you're running against Dave Kerner, correct?
I am running against Dave Kerner. That's correct.
And he is now the Mayor of Palm Beach County. And kind of the way it works is, a Commissioner is deemed to be the mayor. So now, if you won this election, you wouldn't be the Mayor of Palm Beach County. You would be Commissioner. Like, how does that work?
Right, yeah. And it's a revolving deal for, on the board of the Commission. And I would not be Mayor to start. I would just be a Commissioner, one of seven Commissioners on the diet. So that's how that process works. And there's incoming outgoing Mayors, depending on who's selected for that piece.
Okay, that's awesome. Now, you are running in the Republican primary. Do you have any Republican challengers?
I do not. There is no Republican challengers for this, for this seat. There is a write-in, but there are no Republicans, other Republicans running for District 3.
Okay, so, let me just ask you, all this stuff that is going on right now in Palm Beach County, it seems like every morning I wake up and there's more riots, there's more destruction, and of course, the police brutality, and what was done to that man in Minneapolis is wrong. What, what is your thought on all this when you see the destruction and the rioting that's going on in your hometown?
Yeah, and, so, I think first and foremost, we have to end the violence and the rioting and the damage and all that stuff. I don't condone that, but with empathy and compassion, I understand, hey, you know, a lot of people experience a lot of hurt and a lot of trauma. And with that, is why, you know, having mental health is critical, because you need an outlet to express what you're feeling, to know that you're being heard, that your voices are being heard. And so, you know, people do, I had a guy once tell me his mom was so angry that when she found out her brother died, she ran into the wall. She ran herself into a wall. And so, he was thinking, wow, that's, he's not gonna bring your brother back, and you just hurt yourself. But she could not control herself, so she ran into a wall. Again, I don't, I don't condone any of that, but I do understand that mental health and trauma is critical in situations like these. And I believe it's even more important with COVID and everything that's going on, that we have, folks have an outlet for mental health. And I think that's gonna, you know, be critical going forward for every, every, every citizen, every person in Palm Beach County, and every citizen going forward.
Okay, so you tie in a lot of these demonstrations that are going on. How do you tie that in with mental health?
Because, you know, when you watch someone die the way that Ray George did, which we both can agree that, and that was evil, but the trauma of watching that over and over and over again, and having all these different people talk about it, and all these different opinions, and all this stuff, and all these different angles, and you're just like, you know, you really, how do you, how do you, how do you deal with a lot of that stuff? How do you manage it? And so, just having an outlet that, that, that maybe prevents rioting, it maybe, it's more of a conversation that leads to change versus destroying a building. You know, just thinking outside of the box a little bit, to be able to help people mentally process and deal with everything that's happening. And I think that's, and I think that's critical.
Yeah, there's no doubt that the media plays these things over and over again, and they just stoke and stoke and stoke and...
It hurts. And, I mean, it hurts. After a while, you can only take so much of being stoked. And then, any person, right? You imagine any person getting stoked and stoked, it hurts. So, just being able to talk about and express that is important, and express that pain, and listening with empathy and compassion. Now, again, let's go back to your question. No, I don't condone rioting and destroying buildings, but having an outlet that people can talk and voice their opinion and know that they're being heard, it's important as well.
What do you think that outlet would look like? Cause I gotta tell you, John, I think there, mental health is definitely a, it plays into this, but at the same time, we've seen evidence that these protests and these riots are very well organized, coming from the left, and groups like, like George Soros's group, and Hillary Clinton's group. And what would that look like, a, an outlet? Cause I agree with you, there needs to be some way that we can have these discussions. What would that look like?
Yeah, great question. Chris, maybe it's a town hall. Maybe it's just a way that people come through and scream and holler and get angry, have some discussion. It's gonna be emotionally charged, but at the end of the day, you know, really land on, what are we all trying to accomplish? And then why are we all here? But ultimately, giving people an opportunity to just go through that emotional cycle, and let it all out, and know that they're being heard and people are listening. And maybe it looks like a town hall or something of that nature, where, you know, we really can just have some tough, tough, tough conversations, and really get to, get some truth out there, and, and still be, you know, I think that's what's lost, is that unity of community and understanding that you're different than me, but, but that we do have some common ground that we can build from, and that we want the same things without some of the extra things that are going on in our communities.
Absolutely. Where do you stand on reopening? We've seen massive destruction from the shutdowns. Where do you stand on reopening?
Man, let's open it up, Chris. We, you know, we have to, literally, that's, and I keep saying about mental health, but if you think about this, people at home, they're are, they're scared they're gonna lose their homes. They're scared that, some of them have already decided not to open their businesses back up. That means more people without jobs. And you could think about this, you got kids and family at home, or are most vulnerable citizens at home, or people just aren't working, and ultimately, that creates anxiety. Anxiety, depression leads to alcohol, drug abuse, leads to domestic abuse, leads to other crimes that are now being committed. Whereas if they're at work, working and earning a living and moving forward and progressing, then a lot of that could be, maybe, maybe deterred. And so, opening back up is critical. Getting our companies, our bars, get people back to work. Just get them back moving again. And I think, I think we can trust our folks. Call me naive, but I think we can trust our people to set, do whatever they need to do to protect them, their team, their employees, their clients, their customers, and still be open, and still, and still, and still do business. So, in the event that, you know, I think, I think we can do that. I think we can trust them.
Now, we've seen how these Palm Beach Commissioners, how much power they have, and really, how much power is centered around Mayor Kerner, who you are running against. It almost seems like a dictatorship sometimes. If you were in that same position, what would you look at your role as a Commissioner to be? Is your job to dictate if people wear masks, or how far apart they stand for each other, or if they get a vaccine? Is that your job as Commissioner?
No, I think, the job, I believe, is to serve the people, to listen to the people, to listen to the folks that are in our community, that we, that we are elected to serve. And I, and I do believe part of that job, just for, hey, we're gonna teach some things with foresight that you guys don't know, that we have information. But, you know, we wanna do this in a way that's safe, and bringing the information that we have to the table, to the community, and say, hey, here's what we know, here's what they're telling us, what do you guys know, what are you seeing? And then, come up with a strategy and a plan from there to be, to be effective. And that helps protect us. There's precautions, there's safety in place, but also, there's, there's progression, there's movement, there's growth, there's not a stallout, or there's not some things that we're doing that doesn't help or bring cohesiveness and unity. I mean, you imagine, we got hit with a pandemic, and then everything else that's going on in the world. I mean, it's just been a, it's been a lot, it's been a lot, Chris.
So, you're a Republican, and I really wanna get, John, to what your philosophy is. Because I think we've seen so much, how a person who has an elected officer's philosophy is, about the role of government, and in our society, and the role of government in our lives. What is your thought about things like the First Amendment, and things like emergencies? Does an emergency give you the right to suspend constitutional freedoms?
Interesting enough, I can't show it to you, but I have the Constitution on my, on my wall. It's a piece that I created myself. It's a beautiful piece. I would turn my computer around, so you, actually, I'll give you a peek at it.
Yeah, definitely do. Check this out. John Maples has the Constitution on his wall. That's a good sign. That's a very good sign. All right, let's see it.
All right, I may have lost you, but hold on a second.
It's good. Every single person in office should have a Constitution on their wall, and maybe one in their pocket.
Yeah, and I've had this piece on my wall, Chris, not because I'm running, but I've had this piece, I created this piece about...
I didn't get to see it. Okay.
You didn't see it? Let me, oh, let me just...
There it is. Now, you said you created that. You actually made that and put it on the wall?
Yeah, there's no other one that exists, and that, that's the only one that's gone. And so, yeah, no, I, I think, you know, beginning of the day... Can you hear me okay?
There you go. Got you back. All right.
Perfect. Um, you know, the role of government, and again, I know it sounds redundant, but the Constitution is there as our roadmap to, for the journey that we're on. And we just need leaders that, in times like this, and will rise up and have values and morals, and stick to the right thing, and do the right thing, and that doesn't, and listen, you know, to the people. Now, sometimes, when you're in leadership, some of the decisions that you have to make isn't gonna please everybody. But if you can communicate why you're doing it, communicating what the purpose is of, you know, that, and communicating with them and getting their feedback on that. I think that's, I think that's part of what, what we need to be doing as leaders, because we're serving, a servant leader is what, is what elected officials are. And I think maybe that's changed over the years. But I think that's, that's, that's our role, to hear from the people, to serve the people, to let them know why we have to do this. And it may not make sense at the time, but, but hopefully, with the trust and the unity there, when you know that someone has your best interest, and they're, they're focused on serving you, and you know that's where their heart is, then, you know, you know they got your best interest at mind. It's like your, your mom, even though she didn't give you that piece of candy that you really wanted, you know that she loves you, and you know that she has your best interest at heart, and that she'd never do anything hard. I think that's what we gotta get back to as a community, just trusting and believing that our elected officials are serving us. They're, they're in there because of us, and they, you know, they work for us. And that's how, you know, as a finance guy, I work for my clients. It's not the other way around. I serve them. And so, that, I think that's the role of an elected official, that's role of government in our community, is to serve the people.
I like it. I like it a lot. Servant leader. That is not something you hear much from our leaders, because, John, I gotta tell you, the way it feels to me lately, when we go into these meetings, Broward County, not even allowing us into the meetings. You've got unelected bureaucrats that are calling the shots. And it almost feels like when you walk into these meetings, that you're approaching royalty, and they stand there with a scepter, and they tell you what's safe, and what's good for you, and what's not. And I gotta tell you, when you say something like servant leader, that, that gives me a lot of hope right there. So, we're hearing a lot about when it comes to reopening. Oh, we can reopen, but we've gotta do these practices. We've got to wear masks everywhere we go. And we just heard it, they're trying to cover it up, but we just heard it straight from the WHO, that what we had thought for a while has been confirmed, that asymptomatic people do not spread the virus the way that they thought they did. So, but we're still being told, oh, you've gotta wear masks. There's people even suggesting children have to wear masks when they go back to school. I saw this video of some kids playing karate in Weston, and they're wearing masks. What is your feeling on masks?
So, as you said, Chris, so, as it relates to masks, like, for example, I saw some things that, like, in a federal building, when you walk in a federal building, you have to have a mask on, or some business owners say, hey, this is my business, this is my building. When you walk in here, I feel more comfortable wearing a mask. And I believe those people have their, their, their right to say, hey, as you walk in here, we want everyone to have a mask on, or we're not opening yet. I believe that they have the word within their rights to do that. The public as a whole, and I know sometimes we, when we don't, we're, we're not sure what we're dealing with, and we're looking to mitigate some of the things that's going on there. And there's a lot of this and that, and there's not a lot of information, never dealt with the pandemic as such as this. It's gonna be some, you know, some, some choices, and aren't we always, always the best? And they end up turning out to be not the best decision at the end of the day, but with such little information. That's kind of what they went through. But right now, as it stands, with everything that we've got, and that we're learning, as this whole thing is on developing, we gotta kind of start saying, all right, well, hey, well, that wasn't right, then, well, this is, you know, we gotta, we gotta kind of start moving here with, with what's happened. And I get taking some precautions, and making sure that everyone's being safe, and doing that very thoughtfully. But at the same time, we gotta start moving in the direction of, you know, the masks, getting rid of the masks, opening up businesses, getting things back to normal again, and get things moving. We absolutely have to do that, or else, we'll have a bigger problem, like homelessness. And, and people...
Tell me about it.
Or affordable housing is another issue that, that's important to me. But, you know, if we, we continue on this cycle, we're gonna have a much bigger affordable housing issue than, than we, than we even anticipate. So, we gotta, we gotta get things going again, Chris. We absolutely have to do it.
Absolutely. Talking about the homelessness, there's a major homeless crisis going on in Broward County right now. I'm sure there's probably one in Palm Beach, too. And we're gonna get down there on Saturday at nine, reopen South Florida group, and do what we can there to help. Second Amendment has come under attack. The Mayor of West Palm Beach has taken a move to ban the sale of guns and ammunition during the crisis. Seems like everything is a crisis these days, and when they declare it a crisis, that gives them the right to, I guess, throw the Constitution in the trash. What is your thought on Second Amendment rights, and can they be suspended in a crisis?
Well, Chris, that, we can't just throw our Constitution out of the window because of a crisis. That, you know, again, that's, that's our roadmap, and we just can't, you know, can't throw that out of the window. Now, as it relates to guns and suspension of ammunition and guns, can't do that either. That, that, you know, I'm a big proponent of guns. I have guns. I have a safe at the house. That's important. That's my, that's my right as an American citizen. And I believe in that. We can't just start telling other Americans that, hey, and, and, you know, in this crisis, you can't have weapons. And some of it makes sense. They don't want the wrong people, but I think we gotta get back to the right issue, Chris. And it's not guns, it's not ammunition, it's mental health. And I know I keep talking about affordable housing and mental health, but Chris, at the end of the day, I feel like we could somehow get those two issues under control, and get some systems in place where people are getting the help they need. And I think, soon learn that, you know, it's not the gun, it's just that mental space where that person is. That's what really the core issue where we need to be tackling. And so, just getting it back to, you know, investing our resources and money and time into things that I think can solve the bigger problem.
Do you have a background in mental health?
I don't, Chris. I can tell you that, and I'll be transparent with you, with everything that's going on over the last two, two weeks, or month or so, I found myself, I'm a happy person. I am a traditionally outgoing, well-spoken guy. I found myself suffering a bit, and being in the dumps, and really trying to figure out, man, you know, I don't know, I don't know, you know, just having, and in my culture, when you look like me, that talk to a therapist is not something that's readily acceptable. And so, just getting this, getting rid of the stigma, talking to people, and getting some help. So, I jumped on a Zoom call, and just chatted it out. And then, after, you know, obviously prayer, and I have a belief, and just really going back to some of the basics, I felt tremendously a lot better. So just, I know that it works. And so, I'm telling other people, hey, this works. We need to, we need to give this an opportunity, and talk to people. It's okay. It doesn't make you weird if you wanna have a conversation with someone and get some help, and just talk to someone who's professional about it. People talk to me about their money, and they know a lot about money, but they still talk to me, and I'm a professional. It's the same thought, it's the same process. And so, that's why I'm passionate about mental health. I've had family kill themselves, commit suicide, you know, I've, I've seen it. And so, it's, I know it's critical. I know it's critical.
I have a background in mental health as well, with working with, working in a Baker Act unit for a couple of years. And I've also had my struggles with depression. So that's good that you bring that up. Do you think there's a stigma in the black community about seeking help for mental health things?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's unfortunate that, you know, that that's the case, but I'm hoping as this new generation comes along, that that stigma is kind of waning a bit, and it's, and that's why I love this telehealth idea of mental health, because you don't have to necessarily go anywhere. You don't have to necessarily tell your buddy that you're, you're, you're seeking help, and that you can jump on a phone and talk to your doctor. And, and, and no one really has to know if you're uncomfortable. But there is a stigma that, that we don't seek that kind of help, and, you know, that we don't need that kind of help, or that, that kind of thing. But, you know, people are suffering, and, and we need access to that mental health. That is the key, I think, to a lot of things that we're dealing with. And it's an onslaught of all the stuff that we get and we take in on a regular basis. Chris, you know, there's so many people, there's so much media, there's so much of this, there's Facebook, there's all these different...
It's, it's overwhelming.
It's overwhelming, right? And at times, you just need someone to, to tell that to, and to share that story with. And when you find yourself falling down, someone to help you get back on your feet, and mentally stay focused on what, what you need to do to take care of your family, to continue to take care of your home, and work, and, and do all the things that most people, I believe, I genuinely believe, wanna have and wanna do, for themselves and their families. I believe that. And I just wanna make sure they have the resources available to make sure they can do that.
Okay, it sounds like that's a passion of yours. I looked at your website, and seen what you stand for with affordable housing, and, and things like that. So, you are a lifetime Republican, right?
Not lifetime. So, I was raised by my parents. My parents were Democrats. My dad's a Republican now, but my, my, my family started out before. You see in the black community, Chris, just to give you a little bit of history, when you're born, you're a Democrat. You don't know why. I mean, that's just what, that's what they told you. That's what you do. And that's, you don't even have any idea what that means, but you're always a Democrat. You've been once, and then, it, 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 it. So, I got in order to do a little research. I said, oh, that doesn't make sense. That doesn't align with my vision and my goals, and what, they became educated. And so, I said, that, that doesn't make sense. And at the time, I said, I'm gonna be a non-party affiliate, but then you can't vote in the primary. That doesn't make sense. Maybe, what I saw was, there was no unity on the Democrat or Republican side. We weren't able to get, they weren't able to get things done for the people that they were serving, that they were, they were placed in a position to serve the people. And you, you're just bickering back and forth, they're playing politics. Nobody's doing anything to help the people. So, I said, oh, God, you know, but then it was like, my wife, she's, you know, what are your values? We went back to the basics. What are your values? Okay, okay. So, with that being said, you know, my core values have never changed. I've always believed in marriage, life, you know, the basics of the Constitution. I believed in all those things from the very beginning, but now, you know, not, you know, anything taken away from either party. I just felt like, at the time, when I was a Democrat, I didn't know any better. And then, when I got educated, it was, well, they're both fighting, and none of, neither one of them are really helping anybody. They're just fighting each other. Let's, let's serve people. Let's, let's, what do they need? Let's help them. But knowing that you have to vote, you have to have your voice heard, and you have to get out there and support those who are doing the right things. And so, I had to move from being a non-party affiliate, because that wasn't helpful, and that wasn't aligning with the people that I wanted to put in position of power, to be able to make those decisions for, for our community, for myself, my family. So, and so, that's the story on that, Chris. So, as it relates to my party affiliate. But, you know, my values speak for themselves, and they haven't changed. And, you know, I am who I am, and I, you know, I've been this person for a long time. So, this is, this is just John, you know, and this, you know, most people who know me, they, they know that this is, this is what you get.
That's cool. And I'd like to hear more about you. Now, are you, do you think President Trump's doing a good job?
I do. Man, and I know he gets a lot of pushback for some of the things he says, and, and I get it. But I do think, if you look at the facts, Chris, I'm a, I'm a money guy, and so I have to look at the numbers, and, you know, the facts. He's done a ton for America, for our community, for my, for the black community. He's done a ton. And I think he's doing a great job. And, you know, can, can we have this, this person come out and take away his phone every now and again? It's probably, you know, you know, not a bad idea. Meaning, you know, if you're, some of the stuff you say, that could be a little abrasive at times, but...
Oh, the Twitter, the Twitter thug.
Yeah, yeah, the Twitter thug. Someone could, you know, sometimes say, ah, let me hold it today, and I'll get back to you tomorrow.
I do that sometimes, too, with this...
So, but on the whole, I think he's, I think he's doing a great job.
That's awesome. So, you have a financial background. Tell, tell me a little bit more about yourself, as we wrap up here. You, you've worked in finance, and who's John Maples?
Yeah, so, as I said, I graduated, graduated from Palm Beach Atlantic, met my wife there. I actually got my degree in computers, computer science.
In 2005. So, we're about the same age, like 37?
Same age, yeah.
All right, cool.
Birthday's coming up, but, and then, I was a stockbroker for First Discount Brokers. So, I did that for four years. And then after that, I was recruited to come here to Northwestern Mutual, and I've been here for eight years. And so, I primarily work in life insurance design, and planning, and investments. And I have my team here, which allows me the flexibility to be able to have these type of conversations with you in the middle of the day, Chris, and to go to different things, and to, and do some of those things. So, I'm extremely blessed, and just humble and fortunate. So I'm, I'm extremely blessed and, and just humble and fortunate to, uh, man, to be, to be here and to be in the position that I am. And, um, I, I believe to whom much is given, much is required. So, um, just doing my part to, to fulfill that role and that duty. So, you know, that's, that's, uh, that's me. I love to read and workout and my family, love my family. And so I love the work. And, uh, you know, that's, uh, that's, that's kinda it.
Now you're running in its, um, hypo, District Three. That's north, northern area of.
Forest Hill to Boynton Beach. Yep. And so, uh, from 95 going west to about military. I do get a little stretched down Lions Road all the way out to Southern 441. But it's typically that Forest Hill to Boynton Beach gateway area, uh, right in there.
Now is, that's a heavily Democrat area, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
What kinda shot do you have that, uh, at beating Mayor Kerner?
Well, it's gonna be tough, um, but I think my focus will be, um, just to challenge the status quo and the thinking of, of folks and getting out and, and, and getting their name, getting the name and the face out. And just telling my story, Chris, with great people like you spending time and, uh, and just being available to people. And I think that, um, I'm just being myself. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, I don't, the good news is I don't have to try to be someone I'm not to, to do this. Um, and so, um, I think that's what's gonna allow me to excel past him and win.
Awesome. So how can people help you? You don't have a primary challenger.
Okay, right.
Right. So how can people help you right now?
Yeah, Chris, great question. So if, if everyone could, could go to votejohnmaples.com slash donate and help me get the message out there. I, um, wanna reach people and where they're at in their community. I, I wanna be able to, to go show face, knock on doors, put a team together to get out there and, and build that message and, and, and be able to provide more opportunities to speak. And, and just have people continue to get to know me personally, um, and get to know who I am. And so that, that's a big part right now. As you said, I don't have a challenger here early on, but I, I wanna create that momentum to be able to go into November. With people understanding who I am and, and really understand what I believe and what my, what my values are and what I'm passionate about. So donations, small, $10 all the way up to a thousand is the maximum per person, but that would be huge. That would be huge, Chris.
All right. That's votejohnmaples.com. And, uh, I saw a picture, um, of your wife and your beautiful daughter. Uh, you seem like a, a very good man and I wish you the best and I thank you very much for, oh, let me just, but just then. I saw these pictures of you like, like lifting like, like 700 pounds or something like that and doing all these things. You, you, you hit the gym a lot, huh?
Yeah. Um, so, you know, I play basketball and so I, I don't really play basketball anymore. So I do CrossFit. And, uh, and so that's kinda that competitive, challenge myself, push myself outside of my comfort zone. It really worked to be, I like to compete. I like to go hard. I like to surround myself with people who also wanna compete and be positive and grow and challenge each other. So, yeah, so some of those, now those pictures were a little bit, I was a little bit younger, Chris. We were, you know, you know, now we're a little bit older and, but now I was a little bit younger then. Now I'm a little bit more smarter. So I don't lift too many heavy weights that much anymore. Now I gotta try to just maintain and stay healthy and, you know, that kinda thing. So, yeah, that, that was fun. I was competing down in West Palm at the fairgrounds, actually, like CrossFit competition. So a lot of fun.
Nice. Votejohnmaples.com. John Maples running for commissioner in Palm Beach County, District Three. Thank you so much for joining me, sir.
Hey, Chris. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. And as always, click that share button in the bottom. Make sure this gets out. I wanna see you meet every single candidate that is running in South Florida. So you know who is going to represent you best. This is Chris Nelson. Thanks for listening.